Forum present, I'm going to call the May 14th Planning Board meeting to order. Pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025, an act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency and signed into law on March 28, 2025, this meeting will be conducted via remote and in-person participation. Members of the public who wish to participate in the meeting may do so either in person or remotely through the Zoom application. Information available on the town website. We are going to begin with our administrative notes. First on our agenda are minutes for March 26, 2025, and April 23, 2025. Do I have any questions, comments, corrections from members of the board? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion for either or both minutes.
Motion to approve both.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Bennett, second from Mr. Donaldson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, as we are all present, raise your hand. Opposed? Abstaining? Okay, Mr. Higgins abstains. Next on our agenda, we have no covenants, plans, or releases. Next, we have Form A plans. We have A 4899, T.L. Edwards, Zero Cherry Street, map 102, lot 8A-2A, T.L. Edwards, 224-228 Cherry Street, map 102, lot 11D3, Edwards Acquisition LLC, 240 Cherry Street, map 102, lot A8-4, T.L. Edwards, Inc., 250 Cherry Street, map 102, lot 8A-3, T.L. Edwards Family LLC, Zero Nix Road, sorry, Zero Nix Rock Road, map 102, lot 8A-7. This is to divide and create five new lots. Mr. Hartman?
So, again, these are just the lots conform, they have the frontages. There is one lot that currently has no frontage and in the end will not have frontage, but all the other lots meet the frontage requirements of the A&R.
Okay, thank you. Any...
I'm sorry, you said one of them does not meet the frontage?
So, it currently has no frontage. And so, with or without this, there's one lot there that is in common ownership with a lot in the back, and it has no frontage. And they're making it a little larger, that's all, but it had no frontage. You should see on the second sheet, if you look at the layout, or I could even share my screen if PAC TV can show it. So, if you could put my screen up, please, PAC TV. Local scene, sorry. So, if you look at this, this is the lot I'm referring to. I don't know if you can see my mouse. So, the lot in the middle here, there you go. This lot now has no frontage. All they do is add a little piece to it. So, currently it's configured on first, without any frontage. It would just go wherever it needs to be restricted to it. This lot here, it has its own frontage. This lot has its own frontage. And so, this lot, so all the lots are probably, this lot, this is a list, they're just simply having a little area to do with it. But it has no frontage now, so, again, just make it slightly larger.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. Any further questions from any members of the board? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mr. Grandy. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Bennett. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Raise of hands is fine. All in favor? It is unanimous. Next on our agenda is another plan, A 4900, Michael C. and Elizabeth Ann Sawyer, 39 Sleepy Hollow Drive, map 100, lots 39-39 and 39-40. This is divide and create four new lots.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to refuse myself for this.
Good evening, counsel.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thanks, Mr. Chairman, for the record. Rob Dambroso, attorney here with Dambroso Law in Plymouth. I'm here tonight on behalf of my client, Mike Sawyer, Michael Sawyer. He's the principal of Sawyer Builders, Inc. And, you know, as this board knows, it's not customary to present an A&R plan. In this case, I touched base with Lee before the hearing, and he thought it made sense to give you guys some background because there's a little bit of history to this A&R plan. It actually was endorsed in the past, and we're kind of re-presenting it. So, I'd like to just give you a brief presentation if I could. So, I trust you all have seen the plan. This is a proposal to divide two lots into four total lots, basically reconfigure that existing area of about four and a third acres. And this is on Sleepy Hollow Drive, I didn't mention it, which is adjacent to Morton Park down by Billington Sea. It's an A&R proposal. Again, you saw it. These lots all have frontage on Sleepy Hollow Drive, although, as we saw on the last A&R presentation, that's not even necessarily a requisite here. To give you the history, Sleepy Hollow Drive was created as a subdivision through definitive subdivision approval in 1979. So, this board endorsed a definitive plan, and that plan was subsequently recorded with the Registry of Deeds. Fast forward, what, 23 years later, or 33 years later, the same board endorsed an A&R plan. It's actually the same A&R plan that's being presented tonight. The reason we're back is because that plan was lost. The Mylar never got recorded with the registry, and unfortunately, it was lost. So, I would hope this is a light lift, but again, Lee wanted me to, in full disclosure, talk about something and perhaps played into why it wasn't recorded. In 1978, when the planning board deliberated and approved the definitive subdivision plan, they also took a vote, and part of that approval vote said, "We don't want to see," or "We are going to have a condition, seek a condition, that no lots fronting a portion of the cul-de-sac, which is the area in question, shall be further subdivided." So, again, this is the actual vote, letter that was submitted to town meeting. And again, it talks about a meeting of the planning board, and you can see the language down there at the bottom. Fifty-foot subdivision road layout at the end, going toward Morton Park, you know, shouldn't be further subdivided. Now, again, why would the board subsequently have endorsed an A&R plan that divided this very area? The reason is that this covenant, proposed covenant, the language in the vote, I guess I should say, was never implemented. So, on that same date that the planning board endorsed the plan and took this vote, they had Mr. Sawyer, at the time, he was an individual, not through his corporation, give a performance covenant, which is typical for a new subdivision. There was no mention of any such restriction. Furthermore, that covenant, to the extent that it would be relevant, was subsequently released because all the conditions were satisfied. And this is an image of that covenant release, for what it's worth. I don't want to get too far into the weeds. And again, as I mentioned, that subdivision plan was endorsed on the same date, and the plan didn't contain any condition relative to lot division. Here's the plan. You can see it's pretty plain vanilla in terms of notations, and I zoomed in on the next slide to the notes. And again, as this board's familiar, often, the board will put a note on a plan if they want to restrict a lot from further subdivision, or at least put folks on notice. So, again, when nothing's of record, no recorded covenant, no recorded condition, no plan condition, in my view, that condition was never implemented. So, again, I think that the board clearly had the opportunity to impose this condition if they wanted to, but they consciously declined to do so. So, again, wanted to address that vote because it is part of the record, albeit from, I think it was when I was one-year-old, 1978. But again, I think it clearly was irrelevant because the board endorsed this very same plan in 2012. Here's an image of it, and I kind of highlighted for you that endorsement by this board, and you can see that April 2012 date. So, again, just to maybe tell everyone what you already know, you know, what we're here for tonight is just seeking the planning board's endorsement. Again, it's an approval-not-required plan, so we're not seeking approval of a plan, and it's really not, again, not to diminish this board's purview, but it's not a determination of whether this is suitable for development or whether conditions should be imposed upon prospective development, et cetera. In fact, the endorsement of an A&R plan doesn't speak to buildability or zoning, really. You could, in fact, case law has it, that you could even endorse an A&R plan being conscious of a zoning violation. You know, ultimately, it's going to be up to the building department to determine whether or not these lots are suitable for permitting. So, again, this board's authority in this instance, in the A&R instance, is ministerial in nature. You know, really, this board simply is tasked by the state with making a determination as to whether a quote-unquote "subdivision" is occurring. And if a subdivision, under subdivision control, is not occurring, approval's not required. The reason this is not a subdivision is because the frontage already exists pursuant to that 1979 definitive subdivision plan. So, again, that's my spiel here about the history of this, these two lots, and the previous action by this board, and the previous A&R approval. Hope that's helpful, and I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dambroso. I will have some questions, Philip, but I'll open it up to members of the board first. Let me go to staff first, and then we'll do that.
Sure. So, in 2012, as was pointed out, an A&R plan was signed, and this condition of the vote, we were never aware of because it's not anywhere except a vote from 1978. So, that plan was signed in 2012. It wasn't until after that plan was signed that we found this condition. And again, as pointed out, the condition was never enforced anywhere. It doesn't show up on the plan. It doesn't show up in the covenant. It just shows up as this one condition. I would point out, when you look at the A&R plan that's before you tonight and that was approved in 2012, that frontage is there simply to meet the zoning requirement. The actual access to this property is going to be off of a common driveway. So, if we ever talk about, if you look at the intent of that vote from '78, it was to require improvements to use that piece of the right-of-way for frontage. But in this case, why would we ever ask them to improve that right-of-way because it's not being used at all for access? It would be just to meet the technical compliance of having frontage of the lot. And so, when we look at this, I think there are really two options for the board. One is, as was pointed out, re-endorse the plan and just note that the condition was never imposed, and therefore, it's not applicable, and do that tonight. The second thing would be to require that a public hearing be held. And again, I think Rob's right as far as the A&R plan. It's not necessarily an issue of A&R, but I think the other option would be to advertise a public hearing and through a formal modification of the '78 plan, vote to remove that condition. And again, I think I'm comfortable with either option. As was pointed out, there's really not a lot except for that vote, and the intent of this plan is really different than what the intent was there, which was if you're going to actually use that piece for a physical frontage, improve it, but that's not the case. They're going to use it for frontage to meet the zoning bylaw, but have a common driveway to actually get to the lots.
So, Mr. Hartman, can you explain, then, where it says, first of all, what the meaning was when it says there would be a waiver of construction requirements for that road? So, to create a true 50-foot acceptable road, we were going to waive construction requirements for that road?
So, for whatever reason, on the plan, that piece of right-of-way was shown. And again, I think what the intent in '78 was to say, "If you want to use that for frontage, then you need to come back," because this isn't a permanent, like many of the restrictions we see, where it says there'll be no further subdivision of this property. I think the intent here was that if you want to use that for frontage, you need to come back to the planning board and discuss improvements to that right-of-way to use it as actual frontage. I think in this case, though, when you look at the plan, they're not going to use that for frontage. They're going to use the easement and common driveway for access and not even use that piece. So, if we look to honor the intent of the '78 modification, they'd be coming in, talking about doing improvements to that stub, and it would have no, it would not be used. Do you want me to show it on the plan?
I would like to see exactly where that, you know, that right-of-way is and how that meant.
And I can kind of supplement what Lee has... Sure. And I can kind of supplement what Lee is saying, because again, Mike Sawyer lived and breathed this back then. I do have the A&R. It's not, here it is, yeah.
So the cul-de-sac is voted here. This is the stub here that is like, the condition of the '78 votes exists. So these lots that are created, this one has probably, that's not issued, this one, this one, these are the parts. But there's an easement, and they're looking to get access to the three lots of all this common ground. If you said you needed this piece of the right-of-way, they would make use of it, and then they would allow this common piece to access to their lots and not use it.
So again, the condition about improvements, oh, I'm sorry, relates to this piece of the right-of-way.
Right. And if I may, Mr. Chair, I should have added, the reason that the board imposed the condition, and Mr. Sawyer refreshed my memory, was they didn't want another means of egress to Morton Park, which is at the end of that spur there. That was what, that was the spirit of it. They didn't want that portion improved, like Lee noted, to create access through Morton Park. And in fact, that never was improved. It's on paper. The layout exists, but the, nothing's paved. There's no improvement of the roadway there.
And we can only guess why the planning board in '78 did not impose a restriction or did not do anything more than just simply noted in a vote.
Okay. Let me open it up to the board first. I'll start, Mr. Donaldson.
It makes, it makes sense in regards to not letting it go into Morton Park. I think I'm more open to public option two, having it open to the public and have it discussed for us, for us to make a decision. That's where I'm leaning.
Thank you, Mr. Donaldson. Mr. Higgins?
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Mr. Grandi?
Yes, thank you, through the chair. So obviously, there was a reason, and I'm hearing a couple of different potential scenarios here. What about this existing access easement to Billington Sea?
That, well, you could speak to it, but it remains.
Yeah, I mean, that's not to be altered. That, you know, it's there.
So is it, I'm not sure. Is it, is this all cleared, or is this?
I don't believe it's utilized.
Yeah, I'm not aware of it.
Yeah.
Okay. To me, I think it's important that we bring this to a hearing so that we can hear what the residents in the area think about this potential development here. And I'm not sure why it didn't ever get recorded as far as the decision back in 1978, or did you say '72?
Seventy-eight, seventy-one.
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight. Okay. So I would lean more toward bringing this in as a, as a hearing so it can be discussed, and I apologize, get into the minutia of it a little bit, just so it can be fully understood.
So the hearing would be, so it's not necessarily about whether or not the three lots are acceptable, because they have the frontage and they can do it. So the hearing is either to eliminate that position or to require them to actually build the stub. I think that would be the discussion. So we'd have to make it clear to the abutters, we're not here to debate whether or not they can do the three lots. The discussion here is, do we remove the condition, or do we require improvements to that right-of-way?
Right. And I think a public hearing would be the way to go, to make that decision on that, those issues you just brought up. That's my opinion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Grandi. Mr. Smith?
No questions.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. So my concern is with the language that simply says that "no lots fronting on this portion of the layout with construction waivers will be further subdivided." I understand the rationale that's being presented is that they don't want to create theoretically an argument that says, "We don't want another access way to Morton Park." But that's not what this says. It doesn't say it will not be further subdivided or we'll be required to have a road drafted, or it will not be further subdivided unless something else happens. It's a very definitive statement. Now, whether it makes sense or not in the reality of the current time is another story. And I understand your rationale behind saying it doesn't. But I'm, I'm loath to turn around and echo my fellow board members to say, "We're just going to ignore a prior vote of this board that imposed a condition and to say, 'Well, the board waived the condition.'" I have no indication anywhere that the board waived that condition. I have no indication that it wasn't just accidentally not put on something and not brought to anyone else's attention again. And I'm with my fellow board members, I think we have to err on the side of caution, which is to say that if there's a condition here and you want it changed, there's a methodology for doing so, and that's what we should be doing. We should be following that methodology. So, because I think, again, I understand the ministerial aspects of the A&R, but an A&R still has some, we have to make a determination as to whether or not it is an A&R. And to say that we have to approve something, that we have a covenant saying we can approve it, and in fact, the covenant was supposed to be with this board. It says, "The development shall enter into covenant." This is a covenant with this board. It doesn't say that a covenant running with the land, which, again, is something that we did back then, which we should never have done, and nor should we be doing it again. But let's figure out whether or not there needs to be something, or whether we can just legitimately say, with the public's understanding, that this is something we're going to look at, address, and come to a decision with full knowledge of everybody. I just don't want to be in the position of this board making a decision and now having residents turn around and say, "Well, wait a minute. We weren't aware that this was something that was even being considered." And I understand. I know that there are notification requirements, and this is a further hardship, and I do understand that. But these are the realities of dealing with sadly 50-year-old decisions.
May I briefly respond?
Of course.
So understood and appreciated the points here, and we're not trying to shortcut public discourse in any way, shape, or form. I think there's just two considerations here. One is procedurally, if this covenant doesn't exist, which, again, I would contend that it was contemplated but never implemented, I'm not sure how we modify a plan to remove a covenant that, I'm not even sure procedurally how that would work. You know, we, you know, the board votes to modify a 1979 definitive subdivision plan, which, incidentally, has been modified subsequently, you know, via A&R, you know, in lot-line adjustments, but to eliminate a condition that wasn't on that plan. So I guess I would struggle with that, but we could probably figure that out or shoehorn it. And then, secondly, assuming that you agree, or that the board would agree with the way that Lee framed this public option two, I guess I would query whether the public interest would be served by asking this board whether they should require a stub to be built, pavement to be extended toward Morton Park, when I think the intention of that 1979 vote was, "Don't create access to Morton Park." And who wants to see more pavement for no purpose? Or B, waive the condition. I mean, if we're going to, and either way, I'm not sure that it improves the public good beyond simply endorsing the A&R plan. So I would just offer that for your consideration. I don't expect it's going to change your mind, but just kind of thinking through this in terms of what the next step's going to look like, it might be a little odd.
And I think the vote of town, the vote this board would have would be to eliminate the condition, because there is no covenant. It wouldn't be modifying the covenant. It would be simply that, to eliminate the condition that was imposed in '78.
I would agree that that would be the way that we would go. It would be phrased as addressing a prior vote of the board and to modify that vote based upon circumstances at present.
So while I have your ear, 30 seconds, would it make sense to come in with an amended subdivision plan as a, or simply try to get this condition waived and then come in with an A&R? And maybe that's something--
So I don't, I don't think you need to amend the plan. I think you just need to amend the vote. And if the vote is amended, then this plan can stand as it is, I believe.
Okay. So we'd be coming in to modify a vote?
Just the vote, right.
If the vote is modified to eliminate the condition, then, then there is no issue in terms of the A&R. Then it, then it would be approval not required. Our, our issue here is whether or not we can--
Yep. So that makes more sense to me. I thought I heard modify a plan, and I was thinking how we'd do that. But if modify a vote, makes sense to me.
Right. Because then we would then be able to say, "There is no condition that prevents this subdivision," meaning there's no condition preventing us from the A&R.
So Lauren has her hand up.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to state that for tonight, before you move forward, I would suggest that you either ask the applicant to waive the 21-day statutory timeline to, for the board to weigh on an A&R, or to withhold endorsement for the reasons that it's not meeting the requirements of an A&R plan, one way or another, so that it's not left open for a potential, you know, ability to come and sign this if the board did not take action in 21 days.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. That's a good point. I will defer to counsel as to which he prefers us to do.
Lauren, I was going to slip that by you there. No, I'm kidding. I didn't think of it either, but that's a very valid point, and we're happy to waive the timeframe.
Right.
So we're happy to grant an extension. You can tell us what you think is appropriate. We'll give you a cushion.
We appreciate that. Thank you. So we'll waive the 21 days. We will mark this as essentially being continued to another date following a hearing on addressing the vote.
Sure. Do we need to put a date certain in that waiver, Lee? No?
Well, I mean, what we'll have to figure out is, when you get the modification, we have to notify abutters, advertise a public hearing. So we can figure out the logistics of when that hearing would be, and then, you know, 10 days after that.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you, counsel. Appreciate it.
Yep. Thanks, everyone.
Next on our agenda are just the community announcements. As most, I hope, know, Saturday is Town Election Day. Polling locations for a number of precincts have changed, so if you are voting in person, please check the town website to make sure you're going to the right place. Next Tuesday, May 20th, there will be a joint meeting of the Select Board, Planning Board, and Plymouth Foundation to hear from the consultants regarding community feedback on potential options for the Plymouth 1,600 acres, should the town be able to obtain ownership of some or all of that parcel. This will be held during a regular meeting of the Select Board, so that commences at 6:00 p.m. Next Thursday, May 22nd, will be the next Master Plan Forum. This is held at Plymouth South Middle School, starting at 6:00 p.m. The Master Plan consultants will be seeking community input on potential uses for different types of sites here in town. As with all Master Plan events, all are welcome and encouraged to attend, but if you can't make it, the exercises will be available online, so you can participate and provide your thoughts. Any further announcements from members of the board?
Sure.
Seeing none, we'll move on to the next part of our agenda. First, we have ZBA 4161, 79 Noddy Pine Road, Noddy Pines Road Nominee Trust, Diane Stillman trustee, special permit per Section 203-1(c) accessory building location, and per Section 205-2 rural residential and dimensional table to waive the required front and side setbacks to construct a detached garage. The planning board is advisory to the zoning board of appeals on this matter.
Hi, guys. My name is Kyle Hanrahan. I'm here representing Merrill Engineers and Land Surveyors, along with my client, Norm Stillman, and the architect for the project, Jeff Metcalf. Let's just wait till this plan is up here. Do I have a mouse? Oh. All right. So, yeah, okay. So, yeah. So this is an existing 0.57 acre lot in the RR District. It's pre-existing non-conforming within that district with a single-family residential home situated on the lot. We're situated between Boot Pond to the west, the roadway is to the east, and there are residential properties to the north and south. So our client is proposing a 26-by-48 garage with a couple bumpouts on the back corner, and we're asking to waive the required setbacks within the zone. The RR District requires 70-foot front and 30-foot side setbacks, which, due to the shape of this lot with that triangle there, it's clearly not feasible. So we're asking for waivers on those. In addition, we have conservation buffers, as well as a septic system that we have to hold proper distances from. So the only feasible location for this is right where we have it situated in a triangle on the bottom right corner there. The structure will be one-story, and it's dug into the side of an existing hill there, just to not disturb the area too, too much. We're just matching existing grades. So we, overall, we feel the use is appropriate and in kind with similar lots in the area, and are requesting the setbacks to be waived. So I'm going to pass this to Norm. He's the homeowner here, just to speak a bit more on the proposed use and all that kind of stuff.
Good evening, gentlemen of the board. My name's Norm Stillman. I've lived in Plymouth for 21 years, and 18 of those at this location. I'm asking for permission to build this garage for two reasons. First is that I recently entered semi-retirement, and with extra free time on my hands, I have a lot of things I'd like to catch up on, some hobbies I'd like to pursue, and some, some interests which I've put off during most of my working life. Unfortunately, my house is small, and the garage, which currently exists underneath the house, is full of my wife's and mine daily drivers, and then crammed with the detritus of 20 years of raising kids and having a home. I'd like to build a larger garage so that I can, I can practice some hobbies which I've lately taken up, woodworking and metalworking, and also I'd like to learn how to fix some old cars, which I have, and also I need a place to store a camper van, which I acquired recently. Also, I think maybe someday I'll get a boat, and I'd like to be able to keep that in there. Additionally, my house has a strange quirk in that it has only two bathrooms, one on the second floor and one in the basement, none on the ground floor. Also, all the bedrooms are upstairs, and as my wife and I are getting older, we foresee a time when the stairs might not be easy for us to take. In fact, the fellow who sold me the house 18 years ago did it for exactly that reason. He couldn't take the stairs anymore. And I see that coming for me, too. When that happens, I'd like to be able to take over the garage that's currently attached to the house and make that into a master bedroom with a ground-floor bathroom. But in order to do that, I'll need somewhere to put my cars, and this garage will serve that purpose. As Kyle mentioned, there's really nowhere else on the property that can go because of the location of the ponds, because of the septic system that's in the front yard, and because of the location of my house, this is the only spot where it can be. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We'll refer this to staff first.
So just first, just point out that if this was something that the board recommended, or even if you don't recommend, that we'll note conditions. Condition one says that this is property that shall not be used for any commercial purposes. So again, we do note that in the decision if that's something that this board or the ZBA should choose to grant the special permits. So we'll just start by saying, from a staff level, we tend to try to give as much flexibility to property owners to enjoy their property, to make these types of improvements within limits. And in a case like this, we have a 10-foot setback to the property line, and this building is 27 feet from the abutting house. So it's fairly close. You know, it is put into the hillside, so it's not as noticeable, because it is going into the hillside. But again, as we have in our staff report, at this kind of close proximity, if it's not something that's acceptable to the abutter, I think we're concerned about allowing this type of thing to happen this close to a property line-- this close to a property line without the support of the abutting property owner. And I believe they're here to speak on this, so. And then the only thing I'll point out is sometimes unintended consequences, that if he does have a camper, other vehicles, they may be stored outside, which sometimes is more insightly than having them internally, just something to consider. But again, from a staff standpoint, and we'll hear from the abutter, but if this is not acceptable, given the close proximity, we would recommend, not so concerned about the front yard setback, but certainly the side yard setback. And we would recommend you do not recommend the ZBA not grant the petition. But again, we can hear from the abutter, too.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. Okay. At this point, I am going to open it up for public comment first, so before we come back to you. So thank you, Mr. Stillman. Is there anyone here in the room who wishes to be heard? Please come forward to the microphone. Good evening.
Hi. Thanks for hearing me. I'm actually going to read this because I was a little nervous, so I didn't want to speak without writing it down, but. Hi, my name is Gretchen Wiseman. I'm the daughter of Paul Wiseman, and we are the owners of 71 Naughty Pines Road. We're the next-door neighbors or abutters to the Stillmans' property at 79 Naughty Pines Road. I'm speaking on behalf of my father and myself, my family. I'm here today to express my concerns about the proposed development of a large garage near our house. I've struggled with this proposal since we heard of it, because as much as I would like to avoid a conflict with a neighbor, I have a pit in my stomach every time I think about this plan. And just as I would never want him to not be allowed to enjoy his property, I also feel that we should be able to continue to enjoy ours. Locating something of this size so close to our house will fundamentally and negatively affect our experience of our property. Our house and this place means so much to me and to my family. My great-grandparents bought this land 100 years ago in 1925 and built a small fishing cottage. I'm 54 and have been coming here my whole life, the same as my father, who is 75, and my grandmother until she was 100, so five generations of family coming to this property. Since this is about how this development will impact us, I would like to try to describe a little bit about what it means to us and how we experience it. So Boot Pond itself is, okay. Okay, so I think you've seen the site. I don't, I can't put it up there. But to get to our property, you drive down a narrow dirt road, which doesn't look dirt there, but it's a pretty narrow road, through a thick forest of very old tall trees. And though it's only a few minutes from traffic on the main road, within a minute or so, it is completely quiet. You can't hear any noise but chirping birds. No motors have ever been allowed on the pond. There are a handful of houses on the road, but they are mostly set way back where you can't see them except from the pond. There are many species of wildflowers, some rare like lady slippers and others that grow in the pines on the ground. Boot Pond itself is an ancient kettle pond filled with fish, with soft, clear water, warm on top but cool because of its springs, and one of only a handful of places where rare red-bellied turtles live. One side of the pond is in a trust as protected land. It's wonderful for all types of nature, swimming, boating, bird watching, fishing, and living. It's a respite for me and our family, the only place where I am always relaxed. It's very meaningful to me, but, sorry. But I think that anyone that visits can also see how special it is. Our neighbor's proposed building, sorry, I just need a second. Will fundamentally change how we can enjoy and experience our property. The back of the garage would be extremely close to our house, and from what I can tell, towers over our property. The proposed garage is, I don't, it's, I think 14 feet tall. I don't know. It's three and a half and three base wide, and it's nearly twice as large as our house itself, and it's going to be used to repair cars and as a workshop with machinery for mechanical work with metal. To build this building in this location requires leveling half of a fairly steep hill that has been between our properties and which has been covered in trees for as long as we've owned it. It will be impossible to not see this garage at all time. Every time we look out our bedroom windows or any of five living room windows, and within feet, and where we once had trees and woods, we will be seeing the back wall of a steel garage. Every time we enter and leave our property, we will pass within feet of the two-story, or the side of the garage. It also seems likely that, given this planned use of the garage, we will also be hearing the sound of heavy machinery any or all of the time when we are on our property and in our house. It would be unreasonable to suggest that a neighbor should not build on their property, but it does seem reasonable to locate this garage farther from our house. The zoning law, I think, talks about how a proposed structure should not negatively affect abutting uses in buildings, and that the proposed mass and height is reasonable. I think that the garage as proposed will clearly have a huge impact on our experience and use of our home and land. Thanks for hearing me tonight.
Thank you very much.
Are there any questions?
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to be heard? Seeing no one, I'll ask, is there anyone on Zoom, Mr. Hartman?
If you'd like to speak on Zoom, raise your hand, virtual hand. Do not see anyone.
Okay. I'm going to bring it back to the board then for any questions. Start, Mr. Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One comment on the plan is, I don't see any proposed grading on there. Is there a change in the grade? So there's no, the grades are going to remain the same?
Yes, please.
If you wouldn't mind, just through the chair.
Move forward a couple pictures in this slide here. So is that all on the same slide? Because they couldn't move it.
I see the sections where it's set into the hill. I wondered if that was set into the natural grade, or was there going to be some grading to minimize the amount of?
Yep. So we're not doing any sort of grading. We're keeping that hill as close to natural as we possibly can. So the only grading will really be to tie into the driveway at the very front, to tie it into the road. Everything along the back. So as you can see here, we're using structural retaining wall along the whole left side and along the whole back just to bring that existing hill grade in, just so that we don't have to disturb anything else on the lot more than necessary to kind of tuck this in right into that hill.
I see. Thank you. Do you have that view from the other side of it there, the rendering?
Not loading fully. Yeah, so we have the side elevations shown here.
So the top-right drawing there, pardon, sorry for interrupt.
That's the right side elevation.
So that's the side that the neighbors would be seeing?
So the neighbors will be seeing the rear. They're closer to the back-left corner of the proposed garage than the rest of it. They'd be seeing mostly that back-left corner where it's dug fully into the hill. So it's not really 14 feet tall. It's 14 feet from the grade at the street, but that ends up being just a couple inches above the grade in that back corner.
Okay, so what they would see really would be the top of the building?
It would just be just about the roof and then part of the wall as that hillside comes downwards.
I see. What is the roof, Mateo? Is this going to be a roll roofing or is it going to be shingled?
Metal. Yeah, stainless steel.
Are there any other metal garages in the neighborhood?
Yeah, the garage itself isn't metal. It's just that roof material is stainless steel.
I see. The siding is metal?
No. Yeah, can Joe come up?
Good evening. My name's Jeff Metcalf. The exterior of the building, this is the plan, and on the upper left is the left side, and that's the existing grade as it goes up against the building, so the very back in this.
Yeah, you didn't have to show it to the front. Unless you can point from there to the front one.
Yeah, so this is the right side, this being the front. This is the right side. This is the existing grade. And then, as you go on the left side here, this is the existing grade, and this is the top of the hill that's in the back-left corner. And then this is the rear elevation. So between the rear here, this is the height of the existing grade, and it carries around the building like that. The siding is a board and batten-type siding, and the roof is a standing seam roof.
Okay, that explains a lot, because I thought this was a metal building, metal siding. So that's, I'll say that's a little more palatable in the neighborhood. I think not nearly. I drove down there today. Most of the houses are shingled, cladboard. This is a little more modern for, and certainly modern has its place. But my personal opinion, I think it doesn't really blend with the neighborhood. Certainly with something with these drastically reduced setbacks, I'd want to camouflage it, as it were, as much as possible. I do have a problem with reducing a 30-foot setback to 10 feet, especially when that setback is to a neighbor who is not in favor of the project. I do think that I would be more inclined to be in favor of it if it weren't so large. This is a big garage, 48 by 34. That's bigger than my house. It seems excessive to me, especially with the bumpouts in the back getting closer to the neighbor. You know, even if it were just squared off at the 26-foot depth, I think this is really a case of pushing the envelope. That's my personal opinion. I think that's all my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Higgins.
I don't have any comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Mr. Smith.
I concur with a lot of the comments from Mr. Bennett. Very concerned about the visibility of the roof from the house next door, as well as the short setback. And the image from the road is very much unlike the rest of the road that's part of this area. So I do have a number of concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Donaldson.
So I have a couple of questions on the plan. So there's, you have a box here that says "Material Stockpile Area." That, I have some concerns or questions in regards to why would that be on the plan? And like, what materials are we talking about? Or is it just something in contingency that you put there?
Yeah, so that's for during construction materials. That's just the area we're going to designate with a silt sock around it so that there's no erosion or any sort of issues from where there's just stockpiling all the wood or whatever materials during construction.
During construction.
Anything that may be floating around. That's not permanent. It's just a during-construction measure.
Okay. Thank you. And then, what is this proposed 500-gallon concrete? That's the drywall?
Yeah, that's the drywall. We're going to collect all the roof runoff and direct it into that drywall just so we don't have any sort of runoff issues created by this.
Okay. And so is there any plan in regards to vegetation or any kind of, I'm lost what I'm looking for. Trees or screening, yes?
Yeah, so along the front of the roadway there, we should call it out on either side of the driveway. We're going to put in screening plantings.
Screening plantings. What type of plantings?
I'm not sure the exact type. They'll be by landscape architects in future steps.
Okay. All right, so the issues I have is definitely with the 10-foot buffer and it being so close to the road far as accessibility. And it seems like it's a small road as well. And what about far as the roof? So the roof, you said it's going to be metal, but was there any consideration of a vegetation roof to make it blend in more to the hill or anything like that?
I'm not sure. I would have to defer to Jeff on that. He did the architectural designs and chose the materials and everything.
Was that a consideration at all, Jeff?
Yeah, in the 3D modeling, we do show planting on either side and will replace anything along the back and the sides as well. And certainly if the owner's willing to look into a different type of roof that might have some landscaping or greenery to it to make it blend in a little bit more. And this is a fairly shallow-pitched roof, but as was mentioned, the water will be picked up along the back with a gutter and downspout system to go into a drywall, so.
Okay, thank you. You, about you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donaldson. Mr. Grandy.
Okay. Looking at this plan, and I also had one handed to me from the chair that dropped off and actually showed the structure which the woman spoke about as far as where she lives and how close this is to her property. Did you look at the possibility of reducing the size of this garage? Possibly, let me, a couple of questions before you answer. That way I'll go through my list, so to speak. Number one, did you look at reducing the size of this proposed garage? Maybe going to two bays instead of three, and definitely reducing the size. Because in my opinion, you're affecting this neighbor by being this close to their property. And I don't know where their living room is, but I don't want to be looking out my living room window at the back of a garage, so to speak, being so close to their house and not meeting the setbacks. The other thing that may be cost prohibitive as far as you've got to stay away from the septic system, did you look at possibly redesigning the location of the field and pushing this garage closer to the existing home? Couple of the options that I see. The other thing I would think you would at least offer, and if it was going to go forward as is, and not even, I won't recommend approving as-is, myself would be a berm with plantings on it or fencing as something agreeable to the neighbor if you're going to put this close to anybody's home, as far as I'm concerned. So I think the plan leaves quite a bit to be desired. I think adjustments can be made. Small adjustments, some adjustments, but when you're looking at the setbacks here and you have a neighbor who does not want this to go this close to their home. So those are my current issues, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy. I'm just going to very briefly echo the sentiments of the other members of the board. I have concerns when I see something that is literally the size of a home being suggested. And this board has been very, very lenient in terms of allowing people to use their property as appropriate. There is no other building anywhere in this area that remotely resembles something like this. I drove the area extensively several times. I have concerns when I see that the building itself is actually over 16 feet tall. You have 16.6 on the front before you even hit the roof line. The garage doors themselves are 14.6. That's a big, big structure. That is something that just does not fit with the character of this neighborhood. And I'm sure that when Mr. Stillman moved in, he moved in in large part because of the character of this beautiful neighborhood. And I'm sure he doesn't want to change that. I appreciate the desire to utilize your property and to take up your hobbies and do great things and enjoy yourself, but we are trying to balance everybody's interests here. things and enjoy yourself, but we are trying to balance everybody's interests here. So I think that, again, we are advisory to the ZBA, but I think that you're hearing generally the sentiment of this board. And I would imagine that this is a sentiment that's going to be repeated throughout this process. So I strongly suggest that you reconsider this strongly and work with your neighbor to see if you can come up with something that is more palatable to them, because their view is going to take a very, very strong, it's going to have a great deal of emphasis on those making these decisions, because we are asking to make a change that will dramatically affect someone else's life as well. And once it's done, it can't be undone. So I don't have any further questions, though, so thank you. Anything further from the board?
Do you have a comment?
Mr. Donaldson.
And also, when you come, if you decide to come back to the drawing board, please come back with some type of plan for the screening or vegetation or whatever, whatever you can do that's going to help mediate the view if you're going to be this close or something like that. Some kind of plan. I'm at a loss of words, I'm sorry, I'm still in another time zone, so forgive me.
Thank you, Mr. Donaldson. At this point, I will entertain a motion, and we typically phrase our motions in the affirmative. So do I have a motion to approve, to recommend approval to the ZBA? Seeing none, I will ask, do we have a motion to recommend that this be denied to the ZBA?
I'll make a motion that it be recommended by the planning board to deny, as presented to the planning board, the plan for this garage.
Second.
And I think Lee wants to add some language to that also.
Yeah, so based on the comments made, my suggestion would be it will result in overcrowding in the neighborhood, a 66% reduction in the side yard setback, an 88% reduction in the front yard setback, referring to that as overcrowding. Note the close proximity to the abutting dwelling of 27 feet. I will make a change, the staff report does say it's a metal building, we'll note that it's a metal roof with a wood sided, and it's of the proposed secondary structures of size and scale that's not in keeping with the neighborhood.
Thank you, I think that's an accurate reflection of the report. So I have a motion from Mr. Grandy, a second from Mr. Donaldson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the vote will be to recommend, per the staff report, comments that this board does not recommend approval to the ZBA. All who support that recommendation, please raise your hands. Mr. Smith, I'm going to include you in this one as well. Thank you. It is unanimous, the alternate also expressing their support for that position.
Thanks, guys, have a good night.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda this evening is ZBA 4162, 71 Taylor Ave. David Ballandino, special permit required per Section 206-2G2 to allow new construction in the floodplain overlay district.
Good evening, this is Gregory Morse with Morse Engineering, representing the applicant.
Good evening.
Good evening. I can do a share screen and put a copy of the plan up for your review.
Please.
Great, thank you. As I just stated, my name's Gregory Morse, I'm a registered engineer with Morse Engineering. I'm representing the property owner and applicant, David Ballandino. The property is located at 71 Taylor Ave, and this is a raise and rebuild of a single family home. What puts us before the board tonight is we're seeking approval from the zoning board of appeals per Section 206-2G2 of the zoning bylaw, which is in regards to construction in the floodplain overlay district. The plan here that you see, the property line is the bold black line. The property itself is approximately 2,826 square feet. Taylor Ave, which is the public road, is at the bottom of the page here. There's an existing one-and-a-half-story home kind of centrally located on the lot. That home was built in 1930. This property is located in the R20SL zoning district. It's also located in the floodplain protection district. The floodplain is highlighted in red on the plan here. On the top of the page depicts the velocity zone, which is a VE at elevation 16. And at the bottom of the page, the Taylor Ave side is a zone AE at elevation 14. For reference, where the house sits today is approximately elevation 10 on the ground. The existing home is noncompliant with respect to the right side yard setback, which exists at 3.9 feet, and the left side yard setback, which exists at nine-and-a-half feet. 10 feet is the requirement in the district. The lot itself is nonconforming with respect to lot frontage, which we have 40 feet of frontage, lot area, where again, we have 2,826 square feet in width. The proposal is to construct a new single-family home. The existing home would be demolished in its entirety. The outline of that new home is right here. It would be a three-story home for the main box. On the right-hand side, on the first floor, would be a porch addition that extends out. You'll note that there's already an existing porch in that location, we're staying within that existing footprint for that porch bump out. The whole, new home would be elevated on timber-driven piles, would be elevated up off the ground with the top of pile elevation at 18.1 in the first floor at 20.1. This home was designed to fully comply with the height requirements of the zoning bylaw. It's coming in under the 35-foot height that's specified in the district. The new home is located slightly in better compliance with the side yard setbacks than the existing home. We are correcting the left side setback, again, where it exists at nine-and-a-half feet today. The new home is proposed at 10 feet. On the right-hand side, where it exists at 3.9, we're bringing it up to a four-foot setback on the right-hand side. The front and the back yards comply with zoning setbacks, and this brings the site into FEMA compliance. It is non-FEMA compliant today. I'm going to turn it over to you for question and comment.
Thank you very much. Bring it to staff first.
Good evening, are you able to hear me?
We can.
Thank you. So this proposal is something that is consistent with what we're seeing in this particular neighborhood. We are, we compiled a draft advisor report for the planning board to consider. We did receive a conservation commission comments that this is not within conservation jurisdiction. It received comments from FIRE and Public Works, which we are recommending that if approval is recommended, that that be conditioned, that they would, you know, prior to issuance of a building permit, would modify such plans to substantially address those. Given that this project is, like I said, consistent with the type of development that we're seeing in this neighborhood, that it is not going to pose a hazard to the neighborhood and the use won't be substantially detrimental, and particularly looking at the floodplain overlay district findings that you would need to be compliant with this section, it's going to make the, the structure more susceptible, improve, I'm sorry, improve the susceptibility of flood prevention by elevating this out of the floodplain. The availability of alternate locations are really limited, and this is the minimum relief requested by the special permit. So with all of that in consideration, we would recommend that the board consider recommending to the zoning board the approval, with the condition that those items be addressed that I mentioned earlier. And then, in addition, that prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, that the velocity zone certificate for the floodplain compliance be prepared by a registered professional engineer and certifying that it was designed as such. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. At this point, I'm going to open it up to comment from residents. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to be heard on this matter? Seeing no one, is there anyone on Zoom wishing to be heard on this matter?
If you'd like to be heard, raise your virtual hand. Do not see anyone.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for question or comment. Mr. Higgins.
I don't have any, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We don't, I don't see any utilities indicated on the plan, so those would have to be shown. We only have one elevation, so more elevations would be helpful. There's also not a ground floor plan included. And then, the question I have on the rear setback, I think you said that that was in compliance? It's 10 feet from the lot line, is that correct?
That's correct. The rear setback is required to be 10, the proposal is at 10.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Donaldson.
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Donaldson. Mr. Grandy.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions. I see the report from the fire department, are you going to put sprinkler system in this building?
I have not seen the report from the fire department. I don't believe it was proposed to put a sprinkler in this, in this building.
Well, the fire chief is requesting it because of the closeness to the other residences.
So the, the closest residence to this building is 33 feet away?
Currently, right.
Currently, so?
I'm just telling you what I read in the report from the fire department, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. Again, unfortunately, I have not seen that report. If that's a requirement in the zoning and a requirement to the fire department, we would have to do that. It's currently not proposed to be done.
Says, if I may quickly read it, it says installation of residential fire sprinkler under NFPA 13D, obviously smoking carbon monoxide, and he would like to see a sprinkler system go in because of their concerns. So my next question is on your mechanicals being in a velocity zone. I used, have mechanicals on the roof, what are we doing with the mechanicals?
Mechanicals are all interior of the building.
Interior and closets or something along those lines?
Correct, correct, in the utility closet.
Heat pumps, okay. All right, so that was my question, and it's from Neil Foley, the chief of the department, so, and you don't have that report yet, so if we approve this, I would insist that you meet the requirements that the fire department is asking for. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy. Mr. Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Morse. Mr. Smith mentioned that utilities, but I'm especially concerned about where, is there an existing septic system? Is there going to be a new septic system for this?
Yes, we've conducted PERC tests at the property, we'll be designing a new septic system for the property.
So you assume the PERC tests passed?
Yes, that is correct.
All right, it looks like the only place for it is in front of the, of the house, is, is that your plan?
Yes, it'll be in front of the house.
Okay, and the other utilities are standard water and electric? Do you know what the, the heating fuel is going to be for the property?
I, I believe it's proposed to be electric.
Okay, so not oil would be my concern, especially, I think you probably couldn't put an oil tank in the velocity zone.
No.
Bad, bad idea. All right, those are all my questions, thank you, I think this looks, looks pretty good to me.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Certainly, the structure is consistent with other things that are going in, as staff had noted. The concerns that we have whenever we're putting anything in with the flood zones, we've heard a lot about, and obviously, the questions were asked about utilities. When you're putting in a new septic system, are you considering using something that is nitrogen or phosphorus reducing?
So the septic system has not been designed here. It would be a fully Title V in Plymouth Board of Health compliant septic system.
Okay, that's, that's a polite way of saying no.
It's a polite way of saying, I have not designed it yet. If it's required to be so, we would do that. I don't know that this is a phosphorus-sensitive area at this location, but if there's a requirement that it be, then it certainly would comply.
This, this board doesn't necessarily deal with just what's required. Where, our goal is also to try and encourage people to look beyond the simple four corners of the requirements in order to try and make the best project possible for them and for the community. So obviously, our concerns with any of these systems close to water is to try and reduce any potential contaminants that people are facing. So we can't require it, but we can certainly encourage it. And so I'm going to state that this board strongly encourages, in the design of that system, that you consider alternatives that reduce the threat of contamination to the water system.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anything further from the board? Seeing nothing, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve? To recommend approval to ZBA?
I have a motion to recommend approval, subject to the conditions, of course, of staff.
Seconded.
I have a second from Mr. Higgins, further discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Grandy.
Are we, are we going to put in the requirements or suggestions to the zoning board of appeals on the fire department request?
That's already in there.
I know it's already in there, but also the low-nitrogen septic system?
So I was going to use Steve's language, if that's acceptable, encourage Title V alternatives that reduce environmental impacts of the septic system, something to that effect.
Thank you.
Very good, any further questions, comments? Okay, I'll take a vote of the board, all in favor. Mr. Smith? It is unanimous, including the recommendation of the associate member.
Thank you, good evening.
Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening, I have ZBA 4163, 11 Richards Road, 11 Richards Road LLC, special permit required per Section 203-16 to allow marijuana product manufacturing use. No discharge of processed wastewater or processed liquids on site in Aquifer Protection Zone 2, per Section 206-1.
Chairman?
And, yes?
I do see a hand up that I have missed.
I will be represented by my attorney, Isaac's, on Zoom tonight.
So what is?
Isaac Fleischer, but my, good evening, I'm Brandon Lynch, I'm the owner of Coastal Roots.
All right, so he's, he's going, so he wants to speak after this is, okay, sorry, I thought that was up there for a while.
Okay, just to finish, this is Aquifer Protection Zone 2, per 206-1, Use Table 46. So whoever is presenting, good evening, please proceed.
You can take it, Isaac. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I just, I did the hand raise to make sure I could get unmuted. My name is Isaac Fleischer, I'm legal counsel for Coastal Roots, who is the applicant for this special permit tonight. And present in front of you is Brandon Lynch, who's the principal owner of Coastal Roots. The application is for a marijuana product manufacturing use at 11 Richards Road. It is going to be located in a, a single unit of the building, it's about 1,500 square feet. It's an existing building, and the unit was previously used as a marijuana transporter, so there's no new construction necessary for this use. I'm going to say a little bit about the use because it's a specific type of marijuana product manufacturing. product manufacturing. What Coastal Roots intends to do here is, is a type of extraction of, of a marijuana concentrate using a solventless process. So they take, I'm going to get a little technical, but it's, it's important for zoning purposes here. They, what they do is they, they take cannabis flower that they purchased from licensed growers in the state, they put it into essentially a, a container with ice water in order to separate the, what's called the trichomes from the flower, where THC is highly concentrated, and then they just run it through, they agitate it within the ice water container, and then run it through a series of mesh bags. So the reason that that process is kind of important is because most marijuana, on a more, on a larger, more industrial level, marijuana product manufacturing, especially dealing with extracts, uses chemical solvents. And this process is, there's no, there's no chemical additives, there's no solvent, it's purely a mechanical process. So it is, the, the Unit 9, where they're located, has direct access to the parking lot through one pedestrian entrance, and then they also have a roll top garage so that, so that deliveries from vehicles can back up directly into the facility, and they don't have to, you know, carry the cannabis product out into the parking lot. The other existing tenants in that building are a licensed marijuana retailer, as well as a self-storage facility. The, the facility is located in the limited industrial district, where the use is allowed by special permit. It's also in the Aquifer Protection District. The use will comply with all the requirements of both limited industrial district and Aquifer Protection. There will be no wastewater discharged on site, and there's no storage or discharge of toxic or hazardous materials. The, the water used in the, the ice water used in the extraction process will go directly into the municipal septic system, but again, there's, there's no chemical additives whatsoever. The, the applicant is, is working with the town of Plymouth on a host community agreement. We've been in consistent contact with attorney McKay, and I spoke toward today. We've been waiting for a draft of the host community agreement that Plymouth will be using, and she told me that as of this week, I guess they've finally had a version approved by the CCC, and she'll be sending that to us, hopefully by the end of this week, and if not, then early next week. In order to comply with the state requirements, the applicant will have a comprehensive security system, which I believe has been separately submitted to Plymouth Police Department, and, and there's, there's a comprehensive set of SOPs which will, will be submitted to the Cannabis Control Board, but will also be available upon request to the town. There is a number of setback requirements that are imposed on marijuana establishments in Plymouth, all of which this complies with. I won't run through them, but it's, it complies with all setback requirements. I'm going to let Brandon speak a little bit about, about Coastal Roots and how he ended up locating his business in Plymouth.
Thanks, Isaac. Yes, I'm Brandon, owner of Coastal Roots. I grew up in Hanson, I've been in the industry prior to there, there being an industry. I'm in the state social equity program from a cannabis arrest 15 years ago or so. Spent time in California, learned the industry out there. Very much supportive of, of the plant and trying to promote alternatives to use of the plant, specifically with this process, which is a solventless, chemical-free process. It's the safest extraction method out there. As Isaac mentioned, it's mechanical separation, all it uses is ice and water. Most extractions use CO2, butane, you know, pretty harsh chemicals that I personally don't enjoy really ingesting, and, you know, even though there is state requirements, a lot of those still potentially have residual PPM, that's approved with testing. So this, there's never any chemicals incorporated into it, safe product, and I'm now licensed in the town of Uxbridge, and I'm trying to transfer my provisional license there. This has been a four-year project, so I'm very excited to finally have a place I can call home of Plymouth. It seems like a great spot, that as there was an existing transportation company here, you know, it was a grand slam, there's a lot of the security, you know, you guys have already approved this specific location, so as a small business, it made sense to, you know, once again, jump into this leap of faith of cannabis and hope that, you know, I can get the approval from the town and push the project forward.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brandon. I'm going to just run through the site plan real quick, and then, and then we'll answer any questions that you have.
Great.
Share my screen. Here we go. Are you seeing a site plan on the screen now?
We are.
All right, excellent. So the, the rectangle with the diagonal line painted there is Unit Number 9. That is where Coastal Roots use, will be located in, in the larger building. Their, their pedestrian entrance and vehicle entrance are located, like I said, right on the exterior of the building, so they don't, they have direct access to their space without going through the rest of the building. Plenty of parking, as you can see on site, most of which is, is used for, you know, the cannabis retailer there. I believe this use only requires one parking space. It, it, it may be two, I, I don't recall, but it's, there's, there's more than enough parking for the proposed use. I'm going to scroll down and just show the proposed floor plan as well. As I said previously, this was, the lot, the, the prior use here was for a marijuana transporter, so it, it's pretty well suited to the proposed use now. There is no structural changes necessary. They do plan on installing a, like a pre-manufactured walk-in freezer. It, it would, it's, it's freestanding, so it's essentially a large piece of equipment. There's no, no structural changes needed. So the main, you know, the, the main areas, or the main rooms in the facility are going to be two vaults where cannabis product and cannabis material is located, with all of the security requirements imposed by the Cannabis Control Commission. Then there are the two processing rooms that are kept at the necessary temperature for, for the ice water extraction, and then a, a bathroom for employees to use. And then, this is what the exterior of the building currently looks like. That is the front entrance for the retail, and as you can see on the side are the roll top garage doors for each of the individual units. I think it's a good time to just open it up for questions now, if the board has any questions, and I will stop sharing the screen.
Thank you very much. Let me bring it to staff first.
So all marijuana facilities in Plymouth require a special permit regardless of what the use is. Sometimes you look at the use and wonder why, but again, it's the way the law is, everything requires a special permit. I would point out that this is one of the most heavily regulated uses in the Commonwealth, so they go through a very stringent review process from the state to, to get here. So the proposal here is for manufacturing, as was pointed out, this is Richard Road, located off the Industrial Park Road, zoned light industrial. We have a medical, a medical, a marijuana retail facility here already. This site was previously approved for marijuana transport, so as pointed out, the security measures that would have been required were already in place. So again, this is a fairly benign marijuana use, it's just some manufacturing, there's no retail sales here, anything that's created here is transported offsite. The transporting of it is heavily regulated also by the state. So again, this is consistent with the use that was there before, we already have such a facility here too. Interestingly, from my office, and this might change after tonight, but I've never heard a complaint about any of these facilities that we have in town, ever. So again, we recommend that the board favorably recommend this to the ZBA.
Thank you. Let me see if there's any public interest in speaking on this first. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to be heard on this matter? Seeing no one, is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to speak on this matter?
If you'd like to speak, raise your virtual hand. Do not see anyone.
Okay, I will bring it back to the board for questions. Mr. Grandy.
Actually, I have no questions but one. In the cold room, what, what is the temperature in there?
Ideally, you know, it depends on the company, you know, everyone has their own specification, but we're, we're aiming for 45 degrees, 45 to 50, so it's a walk-in cooler, essentially, so what it's classified as, not a freezer, you know, walk-in cooler.
Right, right. So that's where the process is happening?
Correct. Cold chain process, we, we take in frozen material, it's stored frozen, so that, you know, there's never any smell, it's, it's processed, frozen, and then finished product stored in a refrigerator cool.
For shipping out later, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy. Mr. Donaldson.
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Higgins?
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you, the, help me understand the process a little more, as I understand that you're, you're basically cold filtering to some degree?
Correct.
So this processed water that is not discharged into the septic system, whatever it is, where does that processed water end up?
So I guess ideally, you know, a lot of it, most operators do end up putting it back into the, you know, the town sewer. We can, depending on what works, it's plant water, essentially. There's, again, there's no chemicals whatsoever in the process. There's, you know, residual chlorophylls, you know, if anything, but right now, we aim to do, you know, small scale, about 1,000 gallons a month. So in the grand scheme of things, you know, we're a small output operator compared to some of these 100,000 square foot facilities, you know, 1,500 square feet, we don't have a huge footprint to be able to, you know, process that much to begin with, so that's what we're hoping to work with, you know, the sewer department.
So there's, there's no storage tank or anything like that involved?
Not, not traditionally, no.
I, I just want to clarify, it is discharged into the septic system. It's, it's not discharged on site, which is, that's the requirement of the Aquifer Protection District, but it, but yeah, it will be discharged into the septic system.
Is, is that septic system there, or is that town sewer?
Oh, I'm sorry, town sewer.
All right, that answers my question, just another one out of curiosity. How many employees do you expect to have there?
Three to five, not on site, you know, at all times, but I'd say it's a full, so it's a small company, myself being one of them, be one of the processors. So processor and tech probably have most three people in there, and then the rest would be, you know, remote positions, sales, and admin.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I guess I'm, I'm just excited to learn a little bit, something new. Mr. Smith?
Yes, the DPW comments were asking about the storage of the biomass, and how is, how is that handled?
So yeah, we will take in frozen material, you know, by licensed transportation companies, material grown at licensed cultivators in the state, and it will be in freezers, stored inside these vaults.
Your, it's not stored in like a, in a dumpster or anything, it's all, it's all stored inside the facility.
It's inside, everything's stored in the vault until the company has come in.
By a licensed, a company that's licensed to dispose of cannabis, like.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I have no questions, everything's been answered based on my fellow board members, so thank you very much. If we have nothing further at this point, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to recommend approval to the ZBA. Staff's recommendations, requirements.
Second. I have a motion from Mr. Grandy, a second from Mr. Donaldson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, show of hands, all in favor? It is unanimous, including our associate member. Thank you very much, good luck at the ZBA.
Cool, thank you so much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
B 654, it's 553 Wareham Road, Sheridan Home Builders, Inc. Special permit required per Section 207-2 to create a rural density development with 49 total dwelling units, per Section 207-7 for inclusionary housing to create four affordable dwelling units, per Section 207-6 to allow a transfer of development rights for 30 dwelling units. This is continued from April the 23rd, and I will read the required notice. Plymouth Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the 1820 courtroom, 26 Court Street, Plymouth, Massachusetts, on Wednesday, May 14, 2025, at 7:05 PM, to hear the petition of Sheridan Home Builders, Inc., for approval of a special permit required per 20 section, per Section 207-2 to create a rural density development with 49 total dwelling units, per Section 207-7 for inclusionary housing to create four affordable dwelling units, per Section 207-6 to allow a transfer of development rights for 30 dwelling units located at 553 Wareham Road, parcel 120-000-004-000, in the Rural Residential Zoning District. The petitioner, or his or her representative, or any other person interested and desiring to be heard in this request, should appear at the time and place designated.
Mr. Chair, I'll be recusing myself.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Higgins has recused himself from this deliberation.
So Chairman Bolton, just to note, though, so we will have the alternate voting, these are all special permits, so we have five members to vote.
Very good. So for the record, Mr. Smith is a full voting member for this permit. Good evening.
Good evening. Matt Sheridan, Sheridan Home Builders. I'm here tonight to present, Wareham Road, I have my entire team here, there's a lot of moving parts with this project, so I figured it was better to bring everybody. I have Rob D'Ambruzzo, Andrew Golden, both attorneys, Kevin Flaherty from Flaherty &amp; Stefani, I have Shelley Blake with Sheridan Home Builders, who does all my sales and marketing, and we have Jeff Dirk from Vinassen Associates, who is our traffic engineer for the project. And we have Jeff Dirk from Vinassen Associates, who is our traffic engineer for the project. In front of you, you see just a brief overview of where we are in South Plymouth. Wareham Road runs north to south. The lot is outlined in blue. You can see we're on the southern end of town on the Wareham Plymouth line, and White Island Pond is across the street. Our site is 44 acres, and what I'm proposing tonight is 49 single-family homes, each on its own lot. It'll make up 44 market unit, 44 market units, four affordables, one veteran unit, which the board has heard me propose in the past. And each home within the subdivision will be three or four veterans. The first aspect I want to touch on tonight is public outreach and how we got here. This will actually be my fourth public hearing meeting about this project. First, I was in front of you guys informally in February, just giving you a general overview of what we'd be proposing one day. After that informal, we then organized a community meeting at Little Red Schoolhouse that we had probably 25 to 30 people show up, and we got a lot of good feedback, heard a lot of concerns about the neighborhood, which we're going to be addressing tonight. We then went in front of precinct 17 to present in front of precinct 17. Same thing, we probably had 25 to 30 people at that meeting as well. And then that's when, after that 21st hearing, I came in front of the board on the 23rd and asked for a continuance to tonight, to go back and revisit the plan and address some of the concerns that the neighborhood had. One thing that we did note on the slide that I should let the board know is I had several meetings onsite with neighbors, a lot of emails, a lot of phone calls. So in terms of public outreach, I do feel like I've made myself just about as available as possible for this project in regards to the neighborhood. This is a general overview of the project. Everything in green is highlighting all of our open space, which we'll get into later. We just wanted to give the board a general feel for how much open space we're actually offering. Excuse me. Some of the highlights of the project, and I'll go through these very quick. Again, 44 market rate units, four affordable, one veteran unit, and it'll be discounted at 10%. And again, that'll be coming solely out of my pocket, like I've done in the past with other projects. We could do 14 conventional lots by right, but obviously, we're not proposing that tonight. The additional density is going to come through 30 TDRs that we're acquiring from Makepeace, which is part of our approval process tonight. We have 60% open space on the project, and we're proposing walking trails connecting to Bessie Bog Road, which eventually is part of Makepeace's future development. We're anticipating it'll be sidewalks eventually going down Wareham Road that'll allow walkability through the entire area. Part of the project, we're also proposing recreational area that'll be made available not only to the people moving within my subdivision, but for the residents of White Island Association. So if you're a member of White Island Association, you'll have access to our amenities within our recreational area. Our basic infrastructure is going to be a 24-foot wide driveway. It's called a driveway, but it's actually going into road standards through subdivision. We're proposing a five-foot wide sidewalk throughout the entire development. All of our stormwater is going to be collected through catch basins and water qualities. All of the water will then run into natural depressions, so the water will be treated, and then it'll go into natural depressions, so we won't have to do any kind of excavation or earth removal associated with our drainage. We're using all the existing topography on the site. Every home will be serviced by its own well and septic with on its own lot. There won't be any common septics or common wells. Again, to the topography, we're not looking to ask for any relief for fill or gravel or sand removal. That's not our intent. The site was designed to balance all the topography to minimize the amount of earth that would actually have to leave the site. And with our filing, we have addressed all of the town engineering department's comments and fire department, and we didn't have any issues with addressing all those comments. One of the highlights of this project is what I'm trying to do with price point. So you can see in front of you where we're at as a town right now in terms of cost for essentially families. At three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, the average sales price is 887,582. That number has actually increased since the last time I was in front of the board in February. It's gone up by several thousand dollars just in the last few months. New construction has also gone up since the last time I was in front of the board in February, and now the average sales price for a three-to-four-bedroom new construction within the town of Plymouth is 935,568. My price point for a three-bedroom, two-bath, we're going to be starting at 500,000. So our sales aren't going to be exclusively to 500,000, but we're going to have two different model homes, a colonial and a ranch style, that will both be starting at 500,000. So in terms of much-needed affordability here, workforce housing, get thrown around all the time now with that terminology, quite frankly, in my opinion, it doesn't get any better than this within the town of Plymouth. Just simple arithmetic, we're almost half where other guys in town are right now. So the hot button issue down on Wareham Road was traffic. I heard it over and over again, and that was most of the feedback that we got from every resident, everything we heard, all of our community outreach, traffic was the big concern. We did perform a full traffic study on Wareham Road, as I said earlier. Jeff Dirk from Vinas is here if there are any specific questions about that traffic study, but the overall traffic study itself found that there was minimal impact from what we were actually proposing on Wareham Road itself. The traffic report actually got into detail that Wareham Road could handle a significant more amount of traffic if needed. And I understood with that study that they're studies, they're numbers, it's a science, and it doesn't take all the emotion into account with how people actually feel about traffic and the safety involved with it. That's why, even though we technically didn't have to offer anything, I felt very, very strongly that we had to do something for all these folks at this end of town that have gone really neglected with a lot of other improvements that have happened in the area through Red Brook and Makepeace, quite frankly, creating a somewhat bad situation for a lot of them. So after I met with everybody in the public and heard all their feedback, I immediately went to work. I actually met with Mr. Bolton onsite on Wareham Road. I met with Selectman Blitzer onsite at Wareham Road. We had several members of DPW present at those meetings, and essentially what we came up with is we're going to be creating a pilot program that my hope is will actually end up getting modeled and will continue beyond just our project. So what we're essentially proposing is I'm going to be purchasing and installing rubber speed humps on Wareham Road to immediately start calming the traffic. The pilot program itself is going to be, after a year, if we don't get any negative feedback on the speed humps, we will remove them and then permanently install asphalt speed humps. Part of the concern from the DPW was is sometimes there are the speed humps within town, and they get negative feedback about those speed humps, so we didn't want to be in a situation where we did something that couldn't be reversed. So we're going to install speed humps this summer. Before the winter starts with snowplows, we're going to remove the speed humps. Then we're going to get through winter, we're going to reinstall the speed humps in the spring. And then, a full calendar year old gone by, and prior to winter of '26, with positive feedback from everybody, we'll then be permanently paving speed humps on Wareham Road. After that's all said and done, I'm then proposing to actually donate those speed humps to the town so they can start using them in other areas of town to, again, try to help alleviate some of the traffic concerns in other neighborhoods. When I started getting into this, I didn't actually realize how big of an undertaking this was going to be. That one line item in itself is going to take almost two weeks' worth of work. And it's not just going to be a couple of guys out there, and they go in, and it is what it is. It's, we're going to have to have police details, we're going to have to have full crews, we're going to have to have trucks. It turns out these speed humps are no joke. You see them, and you don't appreciate the work that goes into them. So that in itself is going to be almost two weeks' worth of work that my firm's immediately diving into, that we're going to be offering to the neighborhood. Another thing that came up from meeting with all the residents was they would love to see some stop signs on Wareham Road. I couldn't immediately agree to that, and the DPW did have some reservations about stop signs. So part of what I'm proposing is I'm actually going to be paying for a full analysis on that section of Wareham Road corridor to install stop signs. So Vinas will actually go out, do a full study for just stop sign impact on that area. As long as they come back with good data that justifies that we can install those stop signs, I am going to install them. I just need the actual scientific data behind it to back it up, to give to the DPW so they're comfortable with it. And one more thing I do want to touch on is that all these improvements are going to happen immediately. This isn't going to be 18 months from now. This isn't going to be, you know, down the road once, you know, we start actually going vertical with homes. All of these improvements will be this summer, so essentially, I'll be moving equipment in to start the project, and I'm going to start immediately making these improvements so that way the residents in that area get the immediate benefit of it. And then the last slide I just want to show everybody is the continuation on the traffic with the three speed humps we're proposing. They're going to either be seven feet wide or 10 and a half feet wide. That's one discrepancy we're still working out. The speed humps are based off of pace speed, so seven feet is essentially based for a 20 mile-per-hour speed, 10 and a half feet is based for a 25 to 30 mile-per-hour speed. So that's one discrepancy that we're still working out with what size speed humps we'll actually be installing. And then the two stop sign locations, one that Vinas is going to be investigating is going to be a three-way stop sign at my entrance on Wareham Road, and the other one will be a four-way stop sign at the intersection of Sandy Beach Road, Wareham Road, and Maguire Way, if we can. I'll just go back. So just so the board understands, you can actually see on the slide where essentially you see my road A, that would be where one three-way stop sign is being proposed. And then as you travel, it would be north up Wareham Road towards Makepeace. You come around a bend, and you see Sandy Beach Road and Maguire Way where they intersect Wareham Road. That'll be where they're doing the study for the other traffics, traffic stop sign. And like I said, as long as we have the data behind it, I'm going to install those stop signs once I can get DPW's hopeful blessing on it, if we have the data. I know it's getting late, so with that, I'll wrap up and certainly field any questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheridan. Bring it to staff first.
You're good evening. I prepared for the board tonight a draft decision for a special permit. This decision is combining the three special permits that this application is looking for. That is a special permit for the transfer of development rights. That would be the board's prerogative to allow this applicant to land the development rights that they are proposing. And then in addition, it's a special permit for rural density development and the inclusionary housing. So just quickly, want to cover some key points of findings that the board would need to make, and then run through a list of conditions that we've prepared for you to consider. In terms of the transfer of development rights, this property would be, this proposal I should say, would be permanently protecting approximately 45.6 acres offsite of priority habitat that's been mapped by the Massachusetts National Heritage and Endangered Species Program. Those would be coming from the Agawon Core TDR sending area in the nearby AD Makepeace Red Brook development. That land is already under a permanent conservation restriction, and we do have that documented deed information here in the decision for you. The receiving area would then be the petitioner's property over on Wareham Road, that it's approximately 44.7 area, 44.7 acres. The intent of the transfer of development right by law is to allow the development of property to be incentivized really to conserve land in natural resource areas and open space protection to allow you to increase development in a different portion of property. It is purposely crafted so that you can do this in the rural residential area. Furthermore, the rural density development special permit, again, this is the special permit that's crafted for the rural residential district. The specific objectives of this bylaw are to minimize demand for town services, streets, and public utilities, to encourage flexibility in development design through negotiation of different development patterns, to utilize as appropriate the TDR bylaw, and then to encourage permanent protection of natural areas and to provide open space and recreational facilities for the residents. And then finally, the inclusionary housing bylaw. That is a special permit process that is another incentivization tool for developments to increase what would typically be your standard allowed density in a project, to incentivize the creation of affordable housing, a deed-restricted area, meaning income-targeted housing, which we know so desperately needed. We'll also note that at this property, there would be a requirement of 10% as the minimum. That's for deed-restricted affordable homes. They're also offering what we're considering a bonus unit of veteran-specific housing that is added to this project. So specifically, you know, the board would need to find that this project and this proposal for all three of these special permits is a more desirable proposal than what would typically be a conventional development. The conventional development alternative shows 14 house lots, so you need to find that the open space conservation and the development of the affordable housing and veterans' housing is a benefit to the community. And looking at this, the rural density development density regulations would require 60,000 square feet of open space per dwelling unit to be preserved. This proposal is exceeding that. It's providing approximately 73 acres, slightly under that, and that is exceeding the 60 acres that would be required under the density regulations for this bylaw. The portion of the property, as I mentioned, in addition to the offsite program, offsite portion, the onsite portion is also Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program, so that would be another piece that would be included in the open space preservation area. The property itself does not fall within flood hazard zones or areas of critical environmental concerns. It is within the Aquifer Protection Overlay District in Zones 2 and 3, so those requirements would apply for further permitting. The surrounding neighborhood is consistently single-family residences, so this plan does specifically intend to buffer in terms of the landscaping provided and the open space that's around the site to try to provide a buffer to the maximum extent possible. And then there are a list of waivers included from the subdivision regulations as well as the zoning bylaw. And we'll note that in looking at other And we'll note that in looking at other developments that we've seen fairly consistent in the types of waivers that are being required, but the board would also need to find that the waivers requested are reasonable and consistent with the intent of this bylaw. So, the, if you choose to move forward favorably, we would recommend that prior to endorsement of the plans, that they, any plans be substantially revised to address those comments received by Public Works and Fire, as we do with almost all of our plans. To request documentation that the, there's an area of isolated wetlands that may or may not be functioning as a vernal pool, we would ask the applicant to submit documentation, um, you know, confirming or denying that. Also, updated documentation from the National Heritage and Endangered Species Program. They had had documentation that is a little older. I know that we're working with the state to update that, just to maintain consistency with the prior approval letter. And then in terms of working with the Community Development Office to make sure that a memorandum of understanding is executed and that the documentation we typically require for the deed-restricted affordable housing units are submitted, we do recommend that, if at all possible, that, um, the affordable housing lottery for the first sale of those units be selected through a fair lottery process, and that, if possible, to the maximum extent, that at least one member of the House, there is be a preference for those units for people who are currently a legal resident of Plymouth or an employee of the town. We will require documentation about the homeowners' association, specifically being clear to potential buyers that the roads, private ways, all of the infrastructure and utilities will be maintained by the homeowners' association. This includes roadway maintenance, snow plowing, repair, snow removal, maintenance of drainage systems, common areas, walkways, et cetera. And then in addition, we'd like within 60 days of the release of the units for sale, that a roadway signage be posted, that a private way is in existence here. And again, just being really clear to the homeowners that the assumptions for roadway maintenance in the future will remain private as long as, you know, until that changes. We would request that in construction areas, we have orange snow fencing be installed prior to construction, to make sure that we're protecting that open space throughout construction and making sure all the open space areas and vegetated landscape buffering are not at hazard for overcutting. Any minor modifications to the design and location of buildings, um, you know, may be subject to review by the building commissioner and planning staff. We do want to make sure that planning staff are able to, uh, be onsite and inspect as much as reasonably possible throughout the project duration. All road work within the layout must meet town specifications. After a period of two growing seasons, any installed landscaping that's failed to thrive, we would ask that they be replaced to the satisfaction of the planning board. I do have a placeholder here about the traffic improvements reserved for conditions pending the discussion tonight about the agreement. I know the applicant has been working with the community and Public Works on the improvement plan, so I would defer to your suggestion as to how you want to satisfy that condition. We would suggest that the petitioner agree via this condition, agree to waive its rights to further subdivide the subject property, to include division of the lots, specifically those open space and, and any other lots contained, so that there's no further division in addition, under approval not required plans. The open space on-site should be bounded by concrete bounds, again, looking to maintain very clear and transparent rules for any future users of this land, to know that this is open space permanently protected. And then in addition, the open space, we just would like it to be maintained in its natural state as much as possible, to maintain aesthetically pleasing visual screen between the neighboring communities and the development. We recognize that the following work may be necessary and permitted: removal of dead, diseased, fallen trees, selective thinning of smaller caliber trees, and then the removal of invasive species. I've said enough, I'll turn it back to the board.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn.
If I could just add one more thing, I'm going to share my screen if that can be put up on. So I just think it's important to just note, because I don't think I saw it in your packet, but, uh, this is the plan that accompanies the decision. And this shows, this is from the hypothetical as-of-right building of Makepeace, and this is a plan that will show exactly where those TDRs are coming from and from the 80 Makepeace property. So now we'll have many of the TDRs they have stay on-site. It's a little different, but again, in cases like this, and we did it last time on Shippon Road, we want them to clearly show us which properties are being used as TDRs to be landed so that in the future, there's no mistake that they're not, not being double counted. That was it.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. At this point, I'm going to open it up to public comment first. Please come forward.
Steve Leiden, Vice Chair, precinct 17. I would like to thank Mr. Sheridan for all the public outreach that he's done. He contacted the chair to come to one of our first carcasses that he came to, and he asked if he would come back, if he could be put on the agenda. Before putting on the agenda, at his own expense, and he contacted the Little Red School House, and he had a meeting there, and, um, it, like he said, there was 20, 30 people there, and a lot of the, uh, things that were brought up were traffic. I was impressed with the houses being $500,000. If you look at Red Brook, some of their cottages are $700,000. Can't compare the size of them with what he's going to put in his development. The traffic improvements that he's doing, it's not down the road, he's not kicking the can down the road. He's going to do it at his expense before any, any homes are sold. It's going to be done this year. And he has been working with, and I've talked to, uh, James Downey and Mr. Coyle about some of the improvements down there, and, I mean, he's gone way above and aboard in, uh, all his planning and his plans to improve Wareham Road. Wareham Road's a two-lane, narrow road, there's not much you can do, but what he's doing is going to make a big improvement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leiden. Anyone else in the room wish to be heard? Please.
How's it going, everyone? My name's Chris Larson. I bought 601 and 603 Wareham Road with my wife, um, three years ago, and the reason that we bought that house was specifically for, there's two side fences and a back fence. We have two dogs, and we just had a daughter, she was in here a little today, and then, um, we have a second kid on the way as well. So we do have a, um, a shed and a play area that was part of the purchase of our house. So my initial, um, reaction was, I don't want to risk losing the fence, our shed, and, um, the playground, when that's one of the main selling points why we bought the house. I found out that house has been sold two times since that fence and shed were put in, um, and it was someone who used to work for the Plymouth Zoning Committee who owned the house. So my main concern was really around, um, having that fence and making sure nothing happens with the fence, the shed, the playground, as we have a growing family, we don't want that to be disturbed. Um, I will say yesterday that Matt did meet with, uh, myself and my neighbor, um, and was willing to work with us, said he doesn't want to disturb anything, um, and will take care of the residents who are currently there first. Um, so that's something that I would appreciate, and, um, that's something that I just wanted to say in front of the board, and if that can be, once that's formalized, just making sure that nothing is going to be, um, really taken from a property that we specifically sought out and bought. We don't want to lose valuable pieces of that, especially when we have a growing family. So, appreciate Matt's willingness to come out and, and work with us on that. And that's all I got to say.
Great, thank you. Anyone else in the room wishing to be heard? Someone can, can bring a microphone over. Mr. Hartman, can you bring a, a microphone over?
Unfortunately, you got to be mic'd so everybody can hear you and the recording can capture you.
I got it. This is, this is really quick. Matt's been great to, to, of course, we don't like change down there. There's been a lot of change, I've been down there for 46 years. My name's Jane Stroke, by the way, but, um, he's been working great with us, and I just wanted to give kudos to all of his efforts.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that. Anyone else in the room wishing to be heard? Okay. Wait for Mr. Hartman for a moment. Seeing no one, is there anyone on Zoom wishing to be heard?
If you'd like to be heard, raise your virtual, we have one person up, so.
Okay.
Hello, uh, this is Jeff Lauren, uh, 16 Fire Hall. Can you hear me?
It's very hard to.
It, it is very difficult.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, we just, um, with, uh, it touches on traffic. We, uh, we enjoy using the area for, uh, mountain biking and hiking and such, but most of that is, uh, on the backside of this development. Would there be any provision for an egress, a throughway?
I'll, uh, I'll actually defer to Mr. Sheridan, because I know Mr. Sheridan spoke to the Open Space Committee about some of that, so.
I, yes. So, part of what we're offering is specifically why, and during the presentation, I talked about the recreation area being offered to White Island, uh, Residence Association members, is because obviously we're going to have, uh, walking trails and sidewalk, uh, that I believe that's probably what the person on Zoom is talking about. So, in terms of them being able to access them and utilize all that, it won't be inhibited at all, and they'll still have access to, quite frankly, probably better trails than are there now after we're done creating them.
Thank you, Mr. Sheridan.
Okay, is this, um, would this be going through to access Mile Standish behind, or is this strictly within the development?
Uh, no. So when you're looking at it on the map, it looks like Mile Standish is close, but, uh, it's not even close. So, our project is just going to be impacting the Wareham Road area, it's not going to be interconnected with the state forest in any way, shape, or form.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
No.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else on Zoom, raise your hand. I've not seen anyone else.
This point, then, note there being no further public comment. Do I have a motion to close public comment?
Motion to close the public comment.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Grandy, second by Mr. Bennett. All in favor of closing public comment, please raise your hand. It is unanimous, public comment is now closed on this matter. Going to bring the matter back now to the board for questions, and, uh, going to begin with Mr. Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually, I think Mr. Sheridan has answered all of the questions that came to mind, and certainly his previous presentation addressed them as well. I just had a few things that I wanted to commend him on, is that the, this unprecedented community outreach is, is very impressive, and I think, uh, and any other developers should really take, take a lesson from you, is how you've gone about this. So I commend you for that. The open space requirement being exceeded is also very commendable, and I think that's a great thing. The traffic issues and the mitigation that you're offering is also something that other developers should really take a page from your book as well. And, and the last, um, thing is that I'm very happy to see that the, the homeowners' association will be, um, formally created, and also the road maintenance sign, excuse me, I think is crucial to, uh, making sure that buyers within this subdivision are aware, because as you know, and as, as Mr. Grandy will, will agree, uh, we have a lot of issues with homeowners' associations not having been created, or perhaps, um, the homeowners not being aware that they actually are responsible for their road maintenance. So, all of those are good things, so I think, uh, I'm fairly happy with this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Smith.
I'd just like to commend you on the, the development since the last time you were before us, and, um, finishing up the, the TDR information as well as the traffic. Those were two key things that needed to be handled, so, um, and I agree with, uh, Mr. Bennett in terms of, uh, exemplary, exemplary, um, development being proposed here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Donaldson.
So I don't have more to add than what my other colleagues have stated, and, um, I really wish that this would be like a package that we can put in a box and give to other developers and let them realize it's not just, uh, have one and two meetings, and here's my plan, and let me shove it in front of the planning board, and hopefully it gets approved. It really should be community involved, um, and, um, taking in the needs of the community, not just the needs of the builder and their shareholders, or stockholders, or whoever they're holding. Um, so again, I commend you on your efforts, I commend you on your, um, due diligence, and, and I think it also helps the fact that you're from Plymouth, and you don't wish to see any harm to any other Plymouth neighbors or, or people of Plymouth. So again, I commend you on your efforts, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donaldson. Mr. Grandy.
Wonder, how do I follow up on all those comments? How can I, right? I think the most important thing to say here is, you've done a fantastic job with your outreach to the community across the board. I have not seen anything quite like it in my 15 years on the board, maybe one or two other occasions, but this was an exemplary, uh, effort that you went through, through this process. And I appreciate that, and I thank all the residents, some that spoke here this evening, and others that you met in your different meetings. I just have one suggestion, maybe a couple bus stops for a kid somewhere, if you could. If it's not on the plan, think about it. You know, like, when it's raining and you're standing out there waiting for the bus of a 10-year-old, sometimes a little roof over your head is pretty good, so.
We'll certainly look into that.
Just a thought. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy. I have a question for Mr. Dirk, if I can. Just would like to get a bit of an overview as to what the traffic studies that you're going to be undertaking involve, so the residents and the board have an understanding as to the, what's going to be happening and what information we may be receiving in the future, so that we can make those determinations about getting those stop signs, if those are possible.
Sure, good, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Jeffrey Dirk with Vanas and Associates. Um, so the study that's undertaken is, it's similar to, um, what you may have seen for traffic signal warrants analysis, where, um, we are required to collect traffic volumes on a typical weekday while schools are in session, uh, over a 12-hour period. Um, and what we're looking for is the volume of traffic on Wareham Road, as well as the volume of traffic on the intersecting side street. What the intent of the analysis is, is to ensure, and this is what DPW is looking for, providing a stop sign or all-way stop control, um, clearly slows traffic down, but you don't want to have a situation where, let's say, it causes undue delay on Wareham Road, um, being the major street, so that we have significant vehicle queuing taking place, so that all of a sudden, um, we achieve the benefit of reduced speed, but we create congestion and potentially unintended, um, vehicle maneuvers. So, the intent of the study is to look at the balancing of volume at the intersection and make sure that, you know, impeding the major street movement, uh, does not create undue delay. Delay is acceptable to some point, because what we're trying to achieve is reduce travel speed, and we're doing that by slowing it down, by causing vehicles to stop where they would not otherwise need to do so. Uh, but the study's purpose is to make sure that that doesn't result in any residual impacts that would, um, lead to unintended consequences. So, that's what we're going to be doing, as well as looking at motor vehicle crash history. So that's what we're going to be doing, as well as looking at motor vehicle crash history. That's one of the other things that we look at, and creates a baseline condition essentially to see what's going on today, and then make sure to the extent that we were to implement all-way stop control, that we don't have an increase in the number of motor vehicle crashes happening. So those are the kind of things that we're looking at, but the data collection effort is really looking at intersection geometry, but most importantly, the volume of traffic over an extended period on a typical weekday.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dirk. Appreciate that. One other point of clarification. So the DPW had said that with your pilot program, that their concern was potential negative feedback. Now, I just want to clarify for the residents that that was negative feedback by the residents, not the people who are driving in and out of Redbrook. But what we had been told by DPW is that in instances in the past where they have put out some of these traffic humps, the residents complained, because they didn't like either the bumping up and down of their cars, or the noise from trucks going over bumps. So the complaints that the DPW will be listening to are your complaints, not those of the truck drivers coming out of Redbrook. So understand that. If you gripe about it, you don't get it. If you are in favor of it, hopefully we'll see those permanently. So with that, I am, my questions are answered, so thank you, Mr. Sheridan.
Thank you.
Anything further from the board? Seeing nothing, we'll start crafting the votes that we need to address. So Ms. Lynn, do we need to vote separately on each of these items that we're talking about, whether it's the TDRs, the inclusionary bylaw, the additional, and the RDD? Or do we do that collectively as one vote? And additionally, what do we do with respect to the various conditions on waivers of the subdivision law? For example, the allowing for the bituminous sidewalks instead of granite?
I would suggest that if you're comfortable with the way the decision has been drafted, that you can approve of the plans as dated March 10th and revised April 15th, and to approve issuance of the following special permits. You list the three and the associated requested list of waivers per the town of Plymouth zoning bylaws and subdivision rules and regulations.
Okay. What do we need to do to add whatever traffic mitigation measures that we've talked about so that those are part of the approval? Should we just reference the pilot program and studies as proposed by Mr. Sheridan?
Yeah, we'll just add exactly what was on the slide and just add it in as a condition of approval.
Mr. Dan Rosso, is that acceptable to you? You look like you're concerned. I always worry when the lawyer stands up.
So the sidebar here relates to subdivision control. So in your notice and what we have here, we don't have approval of the subdivision. And Lauren, maybe you can jump in. She did the review. So the discussion is, you have the special permits, but they're also looking to have this approved as a subdivision road, and I don't think that's part of what you have before you. Lauren?
The subdivision regulations are included in the decision.
But I don't think we advertised an approval.
In the question.
But I don't think we advertised an approval of the subdivision. It was just a special permits. We'll have to look at it.
Well, why don't we, at least at this point, undertake the full vote?
Yep.
And that way, in the event there is any need to, if there's no need and we're satisfied, then everything is done. If we have to come back, then it'll be a very brief return, since we've already voted, and we will just do it as a formal notice to everyone. So with that, so the phrase would essentially be to, a motion to approve per the recommendation of staff and the additional conditions as established through the subdivision control laws. Do I have that motion?
Show made.
I have a motion from Mr. Grandy.
Second.
Second from Mr. Donaldson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote. All in favor? It is unanimous. Mr. Sheridan, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any further business this evening?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Before we adjourn, I want to just to thank Mr. Higgins. This is Mr. Higgins' last meeting with us, as he has served for his appointed term and is not running for the elected position. So thank you, Joe, for putting in the time, putting in the effort. The town appreciates your stepping up. We are adjourned.
Recording stopped.